Can I get a sound check from you?
This whole person thing throwing me off.
I know, I said this is a waste, I would have noticed it right here, you know.
Yeah, actually you had a painting or a project.
Chris Lassen, can you hear us? Rick, can you hear us and can you give us a sound check?
I can hear you.
I can hear you Charlie.
Great, thanks, I go via this Chris talking.
I'm just telling my time in New York.
I know. They were going to try to block. It's pretty much.
Good evening Deb, this is Chris Kirk, can I get a sound check from you, just to confirm?
Sure, can you hear me?
Perfectly, thank you.
Remind me if you're in Florida.
I was in Naples. Yeah, my parents live there now. It's still there.
No, we love going there.
Oh yeah. We do too, and all my kids were there.
Yeah.
The various sports, the countries they lived in, so it's really. And they like coming down.
You know, that's the name of it, there was a, we called the Tiki Restaurant, but it was devastated by hurricane. So it was on, it was under Queen Naples and I was at Gypsy.
I was, I mean, I was, like some stuff's untouched and other stuff, like going to the beach all over, it's just in order. Yeah, it's bad and then one of my things we just. I'm past where you want. Yeah, it's really, it's cool.
Yeah.
It's cool, it's worth doing. It's off of, it's also kind of. But that was all open and there was sure that would be like devastating. There was lots of junk in the main grounds.
Yeah.
You know, they did their job.
Yeah. My mother-in-law, like Martha, it's her happy place, that's really where they work, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I thought it was whatever.
Yeah, my parents started in Silver, so, yeah, they live in a, they have community. They actually sold their house, they looked at giving it, sold their house with the big. Have a small house in Florida. Now they're close to Florida. You know, they're entrenched in that location, these guys.
What do they do in the summer?
Now, you know, it's been, they suppose, they made this decision in. So they've driven up and taken up here, maybe it stayed there for like six weeks, weeks.
Yeah. And then they also got my family's, that's where they work originally. So they'll spend time, you know, sure, they do try to get out.
Yeah, they, they have come last couple, since they sold the, they've come the last couple of years or like a week and a day. It's been nice. Yeah, and they're, they're held early. My, my parents search.
Hey everyone, this is Annabelle, I'm just making sure everybody can hear me.
Sure can, thank you ma'am.
Okay, I called in because for some reason, and I don't know if it's the internet, I didn't want to let me log in, so I guess I'll take it through the phone.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Actually go from New York.
We haven't quite started yet.
I never liked a red bike. And met a man who's barely missing, and she, you know, really had a relationship, you know, suggested or did correct it, but she never. And I put on a red bike on stand-up and now raining and other, oh, so she's like, totally, yeah.
Yeah, no, I should be, I didn't have a driver's license, we finally got one, we should retire under passport, this is like.
Oh, it's, you can tell, I'm just telling.
Are you controlling the, I'm getting massive feedback. Well, there's, there's feedback, volume feedbacks, yeah. That's, that's better, it's, it's still going on, is the other one on maybe?
It might have been me, I'm on the phone here.
I, I think it's in the room here. Yeah, yeah. Is there a way to turn those down? Okay. I think, I, it's getting a little better. Okay. That's, yeah, we're, we're getting there, keep going. Okay, yeah, yeah, let's do that. Are, are we ready then? All right, we're a little late in starting, but good evening everybody, my name's Charlie Piper, I'm the Chair of the Woodburn Planning Commission. This is a, our February 9th, 2023 regular scheduled meeting, roll call please.
Commissioner Lassen.
Here.
Commissioner Bartel.
Here.
Commissioner Corning.
Here.
Commissioner Berlin. Commissioner Hernandez Mahia.
Here.
Vice Chair Ellsworth.
Here.
Chair Piper.
Here.
Will you all join me in the flag salute please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has passed, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our packets were a little weird this week, but we have on the agenda the review of the, an approval of the January 26th minutes. Has the commission had the opportunity to review those? If so, are there any corrections or additions? Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I move we approve the minutes for January 26th, 2023.
Spin moved and seconded. The minutes be approved, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Is there any business from the audience that is not otherwise on our agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on, communications Chris?
Only items that are related to land use heightens we're going to hear tonight.
All right, in that case, our first agenda item is a public hearing for Brighton Point Annexation and Subdivision. Commissioners, this is a type four application, so we will be giving a recommendation to the city council at the end of this. It includes annexation 22-03, 38 acres, which includes a request for a phasing plan, 22-02 subdivision plan, 22-04 variances, 22-07 zoning map change, 22-03. And it's generally located at 8708 Par Road. I will ask the commissioner if there are any potential conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts or site visits. Hearing none, are there any challenges to the commission this evening? Okay. Public hearing statement.
Both Oregon law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary quasi judicial land use hearings and require that at the commencement of the hearing, this statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report and are as follows. Woodburn Development Ordinance Sections 2.02, 2.05, 2.06, 3.01 through 3.08, 4.01.07, 5.03.05, 5.03.10, 5.03.12, and 5.04.04. The hearing will proceed in the following general order. Staff report, applicant's presentation, testimony in favor of the application, testimony in opposition to the application, rebuttal, closure of the record, deliberation, and decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any party wanting a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request while the record is open.
Thank you. Are you the guy Dan?
I'm your guy.
For yours.
Thank you sir. This is a continued item from last January 12th. And before I get into it, I do just want to give a compliment to the applicant team. They've worked with staff for about six, eight months or so on a variety of issues, they've been very cooperative, so I do just want to point that out. As mentioned, we're looking at a type four application package. Annexation, phasing plan, preliminary subdivision, variance, zoning map change. For type four applications, the commission simply making a recommendation to the city council who will make the final decision at a separate hearing. I have a few items in addition to the staff report, I have a few items to enter into the record and I'll go through those at a later time in this PowerPoint here. But one is a memo, I emailed it out to you all, I think on Tuesday of this past week. There's a printed copy here for you as well, and I have a PDF version brought up on the computer if we need to look at it for those on the phone call. I do want to point out, the copy you're looking at here is slightly modified. A mistake was brought to my attention earlier today, so it's been corrected, I'll go through the correction in the slides itself. But that, that memo is about some, just some additional context for some of the variance requests. Another item to enter into the record is several recommended modifications to conditions of approval. Those will be discussed in the PowerPoint as well. And then the third item is a letter of support from the spec development team. You saw a presentation from spec last month for an adjacent property, so they provided a letter of support for this project. To give you a, some bearing of where we're looking. This is the southwest corner of the property or the city, excuse me, subject properties outlined in red. You can see I-5 running along. I-5 running along the left side of the screen there. Par Road runs through the middle here, goes down, and then it goes back west. So this site is right along Par Road. Centennial Park, not adjacent, but just down the street. Centennial Park, Valor Heritage Schools. Smith Creek, the, the large subdivision under construction nearby, here's that spec site again. So that's where we're looking. And before I dive in any further, I'm going to give a little bit of a refresher to Chris's presentation last month. About just the, I guess, the recent history for this area. Up until 2015, that blue line you see on the screen is the old urban growth boundary. City went through a long process to expand the urban growth boundary to that yellow line, which is what it is today. So you can see the subject property is part of that expansion. That expansion occurred in 2015. And one of the key components to the expansion, in order to get the state on board with approving it, as well as Thousand Friends and other, other parties. Part of the residential land incorporated into this UGB expansion was required to be within a nodal overlay district. It's focused on higher minimum densities, smaller lot sizes, more compact, walkable type of setting. So in 2016, a year after the UGB expansion came through, the city modified the development ordinance to include development standards for the nodal overlay district. And then we saw the Smith Creek application come in in 2017, and the year later, when Smith Creek was approved. City council also approved a nodal master plan for the nodal overlay district. The nodal master plan is conceptual, it's not binding, it's meant to just kind of give a, an overview of how the whole area could be built out. How streets would connect and paths, utilities, all of that. So you can see the subject property outlined in red there again. So that was all between like 2015, 2018. Another component of that UGB expansion was a southwest industrial reserve area set aside. Chris went through that last month and the other, in the spec project, so I'm not going to go into too much detail about that here, but that was right next door. You can see here on screen outlined in purple. That was in, that was part of the 2015 UGB expansion, and in 2017. The city adopted a SWR master plan for this SWR area. This picture is kind of rotated, so north is to your right. This here is the Amazon site, and then you got I-5, the subject property is down in this corner. So this was approved in 2017, I won't say really too much more about it here. If we fast forward to today, the city's in the process of another UGB expansion. This time for the, kind of the gray area here noted as the urban reserve. This is specifically set aside for additional industrial land. So the city's in the process right now of putting together all the materials to submit to the state to expand the UGB once again, to bring that area in. And the city's also in the process of putting together its own annexation application for Butteville Road right of way. This portion of right of way outlined in white here. Specifically so the city can take over jurisdiction of that roadway and that intersection with Par Road. And I'll talk more about that later when we talk about traffic. But the big picture here is that over the last, you know, eight years or so, there's been a considerable amount of thought and planning put into this quadrant of the city. And and it's not stopping either, there's additional conversations ongoing with the UGB expansion, obtaining right of way, and other details I'll get into associated with traffic, but that's kind of just like the historical context I wanted to provide and hopefully refresh you on from a month ago, as we look specifically at this property. 8708 Par Road. It's about 38 acres. You can see it's mostly farm field right now, there is an existing farmhouse, I'm not sure if it's been demoed yet or not. But just to the south of that, this is the Russian Old Believer Church. And we've got Par Road here as it curves south and then back west. Looking at the comprehensive plan map, it's split between the medium and the low density residential categories, and again, within that nodal overlay district. The annexation itself is two parts, so we think of the actual property itself, it's just under 38 acres outlined in red. There's also the right of way in blue, so the, the annexation would include Par Road right of way along the boundaries of the site. And that would allow the city to take over jurisdiction from Marion County of that right of way. The church is not part of the annexation, so I just wanted to clarify that. If the annexation were approved by city council, the zoning districts to be applied would be the nodal medium density residential and nodal single family residential, and they would follow, follow this boundary here through the middle. The proposed development is a 219 lot subdivision. It's all, yeah, all single family housing units, mix of detached and attached. So 107 of those would be detached, single family homes, and then the remaining 112 would be rowhouse units. 72 of the rowhouses would be alley loaded, meaning the garages are on the backside and they access an alley running through the middle here. And then the remaining 40 rowhouses have their garages up front, like we would conventionally think of a house. Want to point out that the density minimums are met for both zones, just barely for the RSN zone area. That is this kind of bottom left, or excuse me, bottom right chunk of the property. They're just meeting that minimum density, and then the RMN density is also met. There's a number of tracts of land throughout the subdivision, some for stormwater, some for open space, and some providing connectivity for bike pedestrian facilities. All of our street standards will be met, standard street improvements are all throughout subdivision. It's proposed to be built in two phases, the north phase would be first, 136 lots, and then the south phase would be second, with the remaining 83. I mentioned a variance application, so there's four total variance requests that the applicant is requesting. The first is an increase to maximum lot coverage, and this is specifically for single story detached, single family homes within the RSN zone. So very specific, not for every lot. We're just looking at this RSN area here, and we're only looking at the single story homes that would be built on, on these, kind of this teal colored lot. So our WDO Development Ordinance standard requirements, 40% maximum lot coverage allowed, and the applicant's requesting an increase up to 50%. For a two or three story home, they would still be meeting the standard. The second variance request is specific to the front loaded rowhouse units. Again, that's where the garage is facing the front of the street. And this is a request to reduce the minimum front setback. So our standard requirement is 18 feet, and their request is to reduce that down to 15 feet. So essentially that's giving them an ability to move the front door a little bit closer to the street. I do want to point out, our development code still requires an 18 foot parking pad in front of a garage, and that's not being requested. There's no deviation requested for that, so it would just be kind of the dwelling area of the house, not the garage. And then the third variance request is a request to reduce the minimum rear setback for front loaded lots within the RMN zone. And this is where I was made aware of a mistake from that memo I, I sent out via email. I originally pointed out, this was being requested for all lots, however, our our development ordinance already, the, the standard requirement for the alley loaded townhouses, those yellow lots, is zero feet. So you can build right up to that rear lot line along the alleyway, so if you follow the cursor here, you can build up to this. Obviously besides a garage, which still has to maintain that 18 feet parking pad. But that was the, the mistake that was called out to me, so I, I've corrected it here. The variance being requested is for these teal and purple lots. And they were requesting a twenty-foot rear setback rather than the tiered standard. That is in our Development Ordinance. And what I mean by that is for a single-story building, the standard setback is twenty-four feet. If you go up a story and you add a second floor to your house, that setback gets bigger. It becomes a thirty-foot setback. So the applicant's requesting a reduced, kind of a flat setback regardless of building height. And if you look at where the locations of those affected lots are, you can see a majority of them are either along a street frontage, the backyard is along a street frontage, or along an open space area. So I'll point out what these tracks are in just a minute. There are stormwater detention tracks, but they're in essence, open space here going through the middle. And then you've got Par Road going around the side. And that's, that's really where the majority of those affected lots are for this variance request. The fourth request is a reduction in the alley access requirement for nodal zones. So earlier when I was talking about the purpose of the nodal zone being a higher density, smaller lot sizes, more compact development. Part of the standard requirements in our Development Ordinance for this nodal area is a minimum of seventy-five percent of lots that have to be accessed via an alley. And that just gets at more of a walkable urban environment where you're not having a lot of interruptions in the sidewalk up front with driveways. So our, our standard requirement here, seventy-five percent minimum lots being accessed via an alley. And the applicant's proposing a reduction to about forty-four and a half percent. And you may recognize this request. A couple other nearby projects have made similar requests. The adjacent property to the east was approved by the Planning Commission for a sixty-eight lot subdivision last year. It's the sub-two-one oh three right here. They had a similar request that was approved, as did the Smith Creek subdivision further northeast. Staff is supportive of, of this request. If you kind of look at the, the situation of this subject property, on the north side and west side, they're bounded by Par Road. They're also going to be constructing an extension of Evergreen Road to the south here, just south of Par Road as it bends back west. So there's street frontage improvements kind of bounding these two sides. And they're also limited on the east side as they connect back into this already approved subdivision. So this is the resulting lot layout that they put together, meeting those minimum setback or minimum density requirements, while also trying to provide products that the market is showing a demand for. You know, buyers are looking for. Other components of the project, looking at pedestrian connectivity, we have the red lines here showing some required pedestrian connections that are off-site. So they'll be filling in a sidewalk gap along the church frontage here. And we also have a condition to require a sidewalk connection back over to the Centennial Park sidewalk. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then the, the orange lines here are some internal pedestrian paths that they'll be putting in to, to help with pedestrian flow through the site. Applicants volunteered to pave a portion of path within Centennial Park. This portion of path is currently wood chip. I've ran on it a few times. There's tree roots growing all over it. It's, it's not exactly the most friendly path to be on. So the applicants volunteered to pave that for the city as part of the, the first phase of the development. They're also proposing a open space, kind of a park tract in the northwest corner of the site. This tract, it's just under half an acre. Some conceptual design drawings here of what they're thinking for that park right now. This would be privately owned and maintained by a homeowners association. But it's kind of a conventional park that parents would take their children to to play. Both staff and the applicant had some safety concerns for this that I do want to point out. You know, it being at, at the corner of a, a future intersection here. We had some safety concerns about it being an open space park area. So they are proposing a fence around the perimeter here, a six-foot wood fence. What kind of fence?
Wood, excuse me.
As I mentioned earlier, stormwater facilities running north-south through the middle of the site. Those would also be privately owned and maintained. And they ultimately would drain northeast into Smith Creek. I want to focus on a couple of these intersection improvements here. I'm going to start with the north. This is where Par Road bends south as you're going east. So if you're going east on Par Road, it bends south. I want to just point out here that the applicant has been working very closely with the spec development team on the eventual design of this intersection. The spec project was approved and it included an extension of Evergreen Road south here to connect it to Par Road. So those two, these two projects have been working very closely on the designs for this intersection, making sure they all mesh properly and appropriately. But I also do want to point out that the applicant has planned accordingly if, if the spec project were not to proceed first. So effectively that would be, it would not be an intersection if spec did not construct that extension of Evergreen Road. It would remain as it is today. They'd be widening the pavement a little bit, adding sidewalk on the south side, but it wouldn't be an intersection. If we continue south on Par Road as it bends back west towards Butteville Road, there's also been a lot of thought put towards how this intersection is designed. So as part of Phase One, that north phase, this would be basically a T-intersection. Traffic on Par Road would be free-flowing as it is today. Wouldn't be a change there for, for drivers. Folks leaving the subdivision would have a stop sign here. If they wanted to turn right or left, they would have a stop sign first. And then Phase Two would effectively turn this into a four-way intersection. I mentioned earlier, they'll be extending Evergreen Road south along their frontage. Seeing as it doesn't go anywhere yet, there'll be a barricade at that intersection. So there'll be a barricade here to prevent traffic from, from going south along that road until such time as for future development occurs to the south and the west down there. And this should probably look a little familiar as well as we talk about traffic impacts. I borrowed a lot of these slides from Chris. The applicant submitted a traffic impact analysis, TIA. And city staff, cities consulted, traffic engineer Chuck Green, who's also on the call with us. City staff and Chuck reviewed the, the TIA. Marion County staff, ODOT staff also reviewed it. Lonnie Radke with Marion County is also on the call as well with Marion County Public Works. But anyway, we all provided an interagency review of this traffic impact analysis. And the conclusions were that five intersections had safety and/or capacity issues identified. The I-5 northbound off-ramp and two-fourteen here at the north. So as you're exiting I-5 going northbound, that off-ramp there. Three intersections along Evergreen Road, so Stacy Allison, West Hayes and Harvard Drive. And then the intersection of Par Road and Butteville Road. And I'll go through some of our conditioned mitigation measures for these traffic impacts. Applicant will be paying proportionate share contribution towards a signal timing study at the northbound off-ramp of the interchange. This would be a, a city project partnering with ODOT to study signal timing to help assess and mitigate safety concerns here. Looking down at the Par Road, Butteville Road intersection, there'll be a proportionate share contribution. The applicant will be paying towards some safety concerns at this intersection. This is a southbound view of Butteville Road as you're crossing the overpass of I-5. You can see Par Road coming in. Right now, the speed limit here is fifty-five miles an hour. So folks that are driving south here at that high of a speed, they may not see someone turning left onto Par Road in time. There's been some identified safety concerns at this intersection. So, so that's the, the concern that's being mitigated. And it's also the reason why the city's pursuing an annexation of this right-of-way, hopefully to obtain jurisdiction of the, the roadway here in the intersection. Because Marion County has some plans for improvements to that intersection to address those safety concerns. And the city's plans are different, to be frank. We have a little more of a long-term thought for how we want that intersection to, to function. It would be further south first, but the condition that's in your staff report here for mitigation for this intersection is worded such that if Marion County retains jurisdiction of the intersection, the, the money that the applicant would be paying, a higher dollar value, I will say, it would go to the, the county. If the city obtains jurisdiction, which we're actively working towards, then the applicant would be paying money to the city to make safety improvements at this intersection. So it's all kind of hinging on this annexation and the jurisdictional transfer of the intersection. And then there'll be a proportionate share contribution for the three intersections along Evergreen Road towards a broader transportation study of the Evergreen Road corridor. City doesn't have specific projects identified at the moment for this, this roadway here, these intersections. So this study would really be identifying how all of the recent developments that we've been seeing in this area of the city are impacting traffic in the area and how the city can be moving forward and improving traffic in, in the area. And to give you a visual of what that looks like here, we've got those three intersections. We've got the extension of Evergreen Road south here. Stacy Allison, Stacy Allison Way is proposed to be extended with future development of that area to the south. There's this little industrial road that the spec development team is, is contributing towards. And we also have long-term plans for an east-west arterial street that would connect Butteville Road all the way over to ninety-nine E. And the proportionate share contribution towards this transportation study would help the city really look at all of, all of these components, all of the recent development projects and put forth projects that are best suited for, for those intersections. So all of that is to say, staff's recommending approval with conditions. And this is where I'm going to talk about my other memo that you all have not seen yet. It is in front of you tonight, but I did not email it out early. Yeah. And I'm going to, I'm going to pull it up for everybody else on, on the phone call. So these are some recommended modifications to a couple of conditions that the applicant and city staff have discussed and mutually agree upon. First is condition eight. And I'm going to switch back over to PowerPoint here. So this will be pretty familiar to you. This was the exact same thing that spec development team requested last month, the change. So this is a condition that talks about traffic mitigation fee payment for the Par Road, Butteville Road intersection. And it's basically saying if the applicant pays money to the county before the jurisdictional transfer occurs for that intersection, they don't, the county doesn't spend the money and the transfer does occur before any of that money is spent. The money would get transferred over to the city and any of the excess contribution beyond what the city is requiring would get paid back to the applicant. It's a lot of words there, sorry. But it is the same thing that spec development team requested and was approved last month. The change to condition nine, this is talking about the off-street, off-site pedestrian connectivity. And I think I'm going to, instead of looking at this slide in particular, I'm going to go down to this one to give you a visual. So earlier I mentioned one of the, the conditions that they're, the applicant's required to construct a pedestrian connection between the site and the existing sidewalk in front of Centennial Park. That's condition nine. And the way it's worded right now is it's kind of just one, one route for that sidewalk connection to occur, and that's along the street. The recommended change to the condition would effectively give them a second option to instead have that connection occur through, through private property here of the neighborhood. So it would connect back into that segment of, of trail that the applicant is already requesting to pave in the park here. So it would still get them to the same point. It's just a different route. Staff's fine with that. And kind of a, a a hinging comment here for this entire condition is it's all if this property doesn't already develop before then. This subdivision, twenty-one oh, sub-two-one oh three to the east was already approved by the commission last year. So they already have a preliminary approval. They could get going on work out there if, whenever they get their civil plans approved. If they don't provide those improvements, they don't move first and this Brighton Point project moves first. That's where this condition comes in and requires those sidewalk connections. So that's the recommended change to condition nine. And then the third recommended condition is regarding public works.
Back up to that, that last condition. If, if the folks from Brighton Point put in those access streets through the other development or the access pathways through the other development.
Yes.
Is there some, I am assuming that if I recall, we required that development to put those paths in, correct?
The, the other subdivision?
Yes.
Yeah, they were required to put in.
Okay, so this is all about who, who's on first and who's. Okay, so this is all about who's on first and who's on second?
Who goes first, exactly.
Okay, is there some kind of a provision for these folks to be reimbursed if they were to put them in first?
Not within our recommended conditions. That would just be something they would work out with the other property owner, other developer.
Okay.
Thank you. So the third recommended modification to the conditions, specifically the Public Works Condition Number 20. And this is a recommendation to remove the condition. The text is on the screen here. All public improvements shall be deemed complete prior to final plat recordation. Basically, this condition, the substance of the condition, is already captured in several other planning conditions, specifically planning conditions. I'm sorry, this is the memo here that I've entered into the record about modifying conditions. So Public Works Condition 20 is already contained within several other planning conditions that talk about timing of when public improvements are due. So just to prevent any confusion or redundancy between conditions, we're recommending to be removed. That Public Works Condition 20. And then finally, I did want to also read off that letter from the spec development team. I'll just bring it up on the screen here. So yeah, it's all in front of them. So Spec Development is pleased to provide the letter of support. Recognizing both projects involve construction of infrastructure improvements affecting Parr Road, both firms have directed their engineering designers to share information, coordinate with city staff to ensure that the design and construction of utility infrastructure, street improvements, all occur in an orderly manner, no gaps, conflicts, other problems with that implementation there. Lennar's team has engaged with them on achieving that objective. Whichever project proceeds first, everything can be completed independently and result in properly functioning street and utility system for that area. Traffic concerns. Woodburn staff has ensured the traffic impact analysis for the spec project incorporates appropriate assumptions about future network background trip generation and including the Brighton Point project. The same is true for the Brighton Point TIA, which assumes appropriate spec project trip generation. Roadway improvements for the Brighton Point project will make in Parr Road. Will complement the spec project's proposed extension of Parr, of Evergreen Road, including making the intersection connection with Parr Road. Because the two projects will complete an important linkage for the city's transportation network. We believe approving both projects is the best way for the city to achieve implementation of its TSP, Transportation System Plan, for this part of the city. Finally, we encourage planning commission to approve the Brighton Point proposal because it will provide needed housing for the Woodburn community at a location proximate to job centers. In addition to advancing the city's infrastructure construction goals, Brighton Point will contribute to jobs and housing and convenient commuting for people in the growing Woodburn workforce. So that's from CEO of Spec Development. And I'll go back to my PowerPoint. That's what I have for you. I can take questions. Can go back to other slides. The applicant team is here as well. And again, you're making a recommendation to city council on the application. So you can, you have a little bit of flexibility there.
I have a couple of questions. Is that 8908, is it a farm that won't be part of this property?
Let me go back up here. Is there a better one? That's probably good enough. 8908 is right here. Currently, that's a farmhouse. Several months ago, actually, it was part of this, the hearing for the subdivision on the adjacent property, that property owner testified, Joyce Hampton. Yep.
And it's for sale.
I will point out, they do have an annexation application in. So it will be before you at some point in the near future.
And I have a couple of questions about overlay districts. So the zoning. So it isn't zoned as an overlay, a nodal overlay district?
Yes.
It is. So how does that happen?
That was part of that's the slide I wanted. So part of, going back to that 2015 UGB expansion, urban growth boundary expansion. That was kind of a requirement for the city to get approvals for bringing in a lot of this area in here, this residential.
So the city is required to have that zoning in that area?
Right, it was required to be part of our comprehensive plan.
Okay, is it the most dense zoning?
The nodal medium density is, that's correct. So that's a good point.
So it's not, it's not the applicant's choice or our choice it was part of?
Correct, these would be the default zones that would be applied on annexation. And the nodal medium density would allow multifamily as a permitted outright use. Looking at a density range of, I think, 19 to 22 units per acre on that. So basically, double what they're proposing would be allowed outright if they chose to pursue multifamily. They're choosing to pursue single-family products. That's what they're finding the market having a demand for. Folks want homes that they can own.
So then what about, isn't it required to have a commercial center?
There is a commercial component to this nodal area. You can actually see it, it's this orange, orange part here on my screen. That's just on the north side of Parr Road. That's anticipated to be a little commercial node within this area. Folks, the way the nodal purpose, the purpose of the nodal overlay is compact, walkable. They can walk over to this commercial area and, you know, get their haircut or get some groceries, whatever.
Thanks.
Yeah.
We have a couple of questions.
What's her name?
Dan.
All right, I'm going to speak. The point of narrowing the perimeter of these dwellings is to make the house bigger? Or what is the point?
Yeah, it. So let me, let me go down here. I've got a, I'm going to slide just for this. So just kind of a summary of the variance that's being requested. For specific locations, specific products here, they're requesting a larger lot coverage, a little bit closer front setback, a little bit closer rear setback for certain, certain parts of the project. And that's simply to try and accommodate what their market study finds. I'll let them go into a lot more detail about the specifics of why they came up with with these specific requests. But generally speaking, they, they do market analysis of what homebuyers are looking for. These are some small tweaks to our code that can allow homeowners to have a little bit bigger houses. I know single-story houses are big right now. Folks want to be able to age in place, not have to worry about going up and downstairs. They can stay in their homes longer. So having larger footprint in a single story, we're seeing a lot of those homes being built in the Smith Creek development.
Still, what about making the lot a little bigger?
Oh, that's where you're, you're running up to some challenges with the density requirements for the nodal overlay. I mentioned they're just barely meeting the minimum in the RSN area by 0.06. So this was one of those things that we went back and forth on a lot in the beginning as we were reviewing the project with the applicant. Trying to balance meeting that minimum density with still being able to create and provide a product that they believe the market will support and buyers will be interested in purchasing.
From what I've seen, I don't know how people find their homes. Everyone is so close, they look alike. And coming home in the dark is very unattractive.
Yeah, folks can, landscaping in their front yards and adequate street lighting.
One of our commissioners, that's kind of online, Commissioner Bartel, did you have a question?
I have a couple of questions. So last month, we were asked to make a decision about the spec property that did not have any clear plans, just we'll figure it out when we get there. And this month, we're being asked to make a decision with, again, some pretty important decisions not even studied yet, and that has to do with traffic. You mentioned five already identified specific areas of traffic difficulty for this particular development. You've discussed two of them, and the other three, we'll just figure it out. I don't understand why the commission's being asked to make a recommendation when we don't have the information that we need to make that adequate recommendation. What if the traffic study decides that, oh my gosh, there's no way we can do this?
That's a good question, and a lot of it is kind of chicken and egg. We have to try to plan for traffic before it comes. But we also have to pay for those improvements in order to accommodate the traffic. So it's kind of a chicken and egg issue. And we don't have specific identified projects within our transportation system plan for these areas here. I'll go back to that.
Other developments do that ahead of time? Didn't Amazon have to do that in their area before their project came up for approval?
Yeah, we require all developers to either provide a traffic impact analysis or a much briefer memo. It just depends on, on the scope of the number of trips they're generating and the type of impacts they're proposed to create. Our conditions that we're recommending are obtaining proportionate share contributions, the greatest amount that we can, we can require from the applicant based on their, their impacts that they're being proposed, that they're proposing. And again, these are, this money goes to a study of figuring out what those solutions are. We don't want to fund the wrong project right now. A couple of ideas that have been tossed around for some of the intersections along Evergreen Road. Roundabouts, stoplights. We don't know yet, though. So we don't want to fund the wrong project and have it be a waste of money.
So you have the time between you, this project gets started. How long is it until something's done with the traffic problem? Five years or less?
Well, this I know we're looking at getting this sub-area transportation study going, I believe, hopefully later this year. And then we would make changes, updates to our transportation system plan to put in projects that get determined from that study. And that, that's how projects can get added to the capital improvement plan that the city budgets for. There's a five-year capital improvement plan that city council adopts, funding various infrastructure projects throughout the city.
So I guess I'm saying to help Commissioner Bartel, a traffic study takes one year or six months?
Sure. The question, well, this is Chris Carr, Community Development Director. If it helps explain sort of what we can and can't do, I think that's important. So when an application comes in, we do an analysis of intersections, sometimes on the other side of town, depending on how extensive it is. Right, so here, I'm sure there were intersection, we did a traffic analysis prepared by professional traffic engineer, reviewed by our traffic engineer that we hired to work on our behalf to analyze safety issues at all those intersections and sometimes segments of roadway, as well as capacity issues, right? How many cars are coming through, or whether or not they can make it? Now, what we can ask and require of a developer is limited. For starters, if it's along their frontage, we have a requirement in our code that they have to make all frontage improvements required on there, essentially half their frontage. Sometimes it's three quarters. And that's the case here for what they're doing along Parr Road. And of course, all their internal streets will be public. They have to build them to our standards. The next step, as you start reaching out in other areas, is you identify what those deficiencies are. And it might be safety, and it might be, it's usually safety or capacity. And the places that we've identified here, some of those are identified on the map that Dan's showing you, are ones that we've identified. But that doesn't mean that the applicant has to pay for all the improvements because there's a problem at Hayes and Settlemire. Because what we do is we look at how much traffic they're putting on to that particular facility. And they pay their proportionate share for what it costs to make the upgrades or improvements to that facility. What's a bit unusual here, which leads to this study, is we don't have, I don't have somewhere in our TSP that says the solution to Stacy Allison and Evergreen will be a roundabout, right? We think it might be something like that. But that might be like a terrible solution for there. So we're not going to start collecting money and acquiring right away if we decide, actually, we should have just put a light in, or we should have put a roundabout at Hayes instead. And now we've wasted our time. So we need to do that analysis before we can take the next step to put it into a capital project.
So you actually have to see how the neighborhood works before you start working on it?
It is, it is. And what, what we can do legally is require applications to pay, first of all, all the SDCs, their system development charges for transportation. It goes into the system that pays for these capital improvements, as well as paying their proportionate share for what level of capacity they're adding to these deficient intersections. And that's what these numbers are that you hear us come up with all the time. And sometimes it's $68,000 or whatever it might be. And that's done based on these detailed analysis that we have completed. From the city's end, that's the maximum, that, those are the maximum sort of transportation requirements we can, we can ask for. And I started by saying this, I can't say, oh, and because we have a problem that's been existed for the last 30 years up the road, you need to fix that too, and it's going to cost four million bucks or you can't. That's not an option, Christine.
So if you're charging them today's price, and then the study is going to be, or the actual work is going to be done in five years, obviously, the money's inadequate. So how do you balance that?
So we have a, what we call a capital improvement program, which is a very specific five-year, I'm looking, or six, five-year plan that we have that says, this is the exact improvement we're going to make. exact improvement we're going to make now. And then we determine that cost at that time. You're right, if something was paid for 12 years ago, and we've been collecting money for it, we don't have enough cash for it. That's the reason we update our SDCs, right? Our system development charges.
Does it still get made or done?
Those do, right, right. Once they're put in the plan, that's where the cash goes, which leads, it's a little bit away from this project, but it's still an important kind of concept to understand. That leads to this idea of the TSP, the Transportation System Plan, which leads to which projects are your highest priority in the city that we put in the CIP. And that gets to what we talked about sort of 99 and 211 earlier, and the other part where I had a long discussion about where we're making our priority in this part of town as well. So those are our two higher priorities, so that we could do projects here as soon as possible. By the way, we've been collecting a lot of money in SDCs, by the way, transportation SDCs. So that bank's actually starting to fill up. We're pretty confident we'll be able to make a lot of these improvements going forward that have been in the back burner. It took us years to get Hayes done, because, as Dan said, development, for the most part, pays for these improvements. And when we didn't have development for 12 years, there was no money in the kitty. And now that's coming.
Chris, this is Chuck Green. Can I add something to that?
Please do. Chuck's our traffic engineer. Oh, good.
Yeah, Chuck Green with O-Tech, and the city's traffic consultant. If you look at the Transportation System Plan and the projects for which SDCs are being collected, a lot of the improvements that are identified are intersection improvements. They're not designed, they are a concept, and that concept comes with an estimated cost. These dots that you're seeing are not part of that TSP, but if they were, we're collecting these impact or mitigation fees consistent with how we would collect system development charges to pay for them. So we have kind of a conceptual cost for each one of these. We just don't have a design, much like we don't have a design for 99E and 214, or any of the other intersection improvements that are identified in the Transportation System
Any more questions for staff at this time?
I have a couple of questions. So related specifically to the variance about shortening the front yard setbacks. Can you speak to the sidewalks and things that they will have? How wide are the sidewalks? Are we doing the sidewalk tree strip?
Yep, the street improvements will be matching what our standard requirements are. No changes requested to what those standards require.
There's still plenty of room with the reduced setback.
Correct, yeah. They're still going to be dedicating for all of these internal local streets here. 60 feet wide right-of-way, 34 feet of pavement, six-foot landscape strip on each side, and then on the other side of that landscape strip is a six-foot sidewalk on each side.
The setbacks begins at the outside edge of the right-of-way.
That's correct.
So decreased setbacks do not affect the 60-foot street sidewalks, blah, blah, blah.
That's correct. Thank you.
And you said something before about the garage or something. I didn't understand that. Exactly what does this look like from, say, the front door?
In a different section of our development ordinance, where it talks about parking requirements, there is a required paved parking pad, so a driveway effectively, required in front of every garage door. And the dimensions of that are eight by 18. So if you have a two-car wide garage, like a standard two-car garage, that's 18 by 18. No, 16 by 18. Yeah.
So then, if you have a 15-foot setback, basically your front row is here, and then your garage.
The garage is a little bit further back behind the house.
So that means it's closer than 15 feet, but the garage could be back further. I see.
Yep.
Okay, is there anything, are you pausing, or are the driveways so close that there's no street parking?
Oh, we do have a condition in there that talks about maximum driveway widths for this exact reason.
Well, that doesn't give you the space between the driveways if you can park on the street on the.
Right, yeah, we're limiting, we're capping driveway widths. I want to sit, let me pull that up.
While Dan's looking that up, just kind of two things. This comes up often. I think there is often an idea to try to maximize as much on-street parking spaces as we can, because we tend to have a parking problem in a lot of these single-family home districts. One thing to keep in mind, and one of the positive elements of the kind of alley-loaded homes, is that the other side of that home doesn't have a garage coming into the front, right? So there's on-street parking in front. The real hindrance to on-street parking is driveways, right? When there's a driveway on every single lot, and the driveways are wide, you don't have enough room for parking. So where it's alley-fed, there's always on the other side, correct me if I'm wrong, there's always going to be additional spaces on that side, because there's no driveway on the street.
The houses and.
Dan's going to talk about the ones that have a driveway in front of them.
Just to piggyback off of that, so these yellow lots here, the garages would be in the back, so there wouldn't be any driveways around, you know, any of this. So all of that would be street parking. The remaining kind of teal and purple lots would have driveways along the streets. And for each unit, we have a condition in here that caps driveway width at 19 feet. So that's really to provide for as much on-street parking as possible.
My question, though, is between the driveways, how much space is there? Is there space to park your car? Not on one side is the driveway, the other, and then in the middle between?
Yeah. What, the developer may be able to speak a little bit more to this as well, but I know that a lot of home builders try to pair the homes as close as possible. If you think about water meter boxes, some of the, like the stormwater spouts that go out into the curb, it's easier and more cost-effective for them to put them closer together. So that means, if you think about every kind of pair of homes, so I'm going to use my cursor here on the screen, they may try to put the driveways for these two lots together here and have those water meters in the middle, because it's more cost-effective for them to put those closer together. And that way, there's more separation between the next two. Yeah.
Will there be any provisions for low-income housing?
I'm sorry, can you say that again, please?
Will there be any provisions for low-income housing in this development?
I believe the applicant is proposing all market rate units.
Okay, the one question I have, would you pull up the slide with the urban reserve, the nodal, and this property?
Sure. Urban reserve.
Any of those would be fine.
Eric, how about?
Okay, so we said that, as I'm looking at this, because we're also looking at the annexation aspects of it, the rectangle in the top right and the square in the center-left, the Russian church and the current homeowner. We are not talking about annexing those in now, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. One of the problems we have on 99 is we have a Jack Leonard effect on properties that have been annexed in and properties that haven't, and this one's in the county, this one's not. And then we've got the urban reserve right next to it. Is it possible that at some point, the Russian church will still be in the county and completely city around it?
That is possible. I do know that the applicant had a lot of conversations with the church in the beginning of this process to see if they were interested in joining in on the application. From what I remember, they were really not interested at this time. Yeah, yeah, sorry, that's this, the church is right here. That is a good point. Thank you, Chris. The right-of-way along the church frontage is part of the annexation. Just the church property is not. And this property, as I mentioned earlier, they do have an active annexation application in, just hasn't come before you yet.
Thank you.
Okay, in an effort to move this along, testimony by the applicant. Name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening, Chair Piper, members of the Planning Commission. Is this okay? Is there feedback over there? My name is Dana Craftcheck. I'm a land judge's attorney at the firm of Stoll Reeds. I'm here on behalf of Lennar Northwest. We've got our whole team here, Roseanne Johnson from Lennar.
Address, please.
Oh, sorry, 760 Southwest 9th Avenue, Suite 3, perfect, for the 30th floor. So that'd be 3,000 Portland, Oregon, 97205. Or at least a couple days a week, that's where I am. So we've got Roseanne Johnson from Lennar here, also Michael Anders from Lennar, from Emirio Design, who can answer any planning or engineering questions, is Roy Hankins and Jennifer Arnold, and we've got Jennifer Danziger from Lancaster Mobley, in case you've got any traffic questions. I'd like to start out the same way that Dan did, in terms of expressing our appreciation for the collaboration staff. There were issues to work through, and I think we've come up with really great solutions with staff, with the spec development, and so we really appreciate their level of engagement. As you know, we asked for continuance from last month. That was to work on some tweaks of some transportation conditions. And with the benefit of that extra time, we're supportive of all of the conditions, including the modifications that were explained this evening. You know, there are a number of conditions, many of them talk about transportation, and Dan did a great job marching through what all of those were. But I would like to just pick up a little bit on the question from Commissioner Bartel on the phone. And Community Director Kerr, I think, did a great job. You know, SDCs are such an important part of your financing for infrastructure improvements. And at the time that building permits are issued for all of these homes, they are going to pay it to that future capacity building improvements. We're going above and beyond that by also contributing to that study that will help you decide where you're going to spend that money. And so development is paying its way, it's just a little bit of the chicken and egg in terms of what exactly do those improvements look like. You know, I think the benefit of doing this study is it will enable you to talk, to think through those urban reserve areas, so you're not just fixing the issues that are currently existing or that may be contributed to by this project, but you're going to look ahead to see, all right, if we get this urban reserve land, what improvements are needed? So it's really too soon to decide today what those improvements on Evergreen should be. You want to take a bigger step back, and in the meantime, you're collecting the money for it. So Lennar is very invested in Woodburn. They're excited about the Smith Creek project that's underway. Your community needs housing. That's why you've been trying for a long time to expand your urban growth boundary, and then they're going to try to do it again. And so we're looking forward to providing that needed housing. And we do request your recommendation for approval this evening. The staff report was so thorough, you know, we attended and watched the spec hearing, which had some similarity in issues. And so we're going to keep the rest of our presentation streamlined, but please do ask questions during our presentation. Could you go to the next slide, please, Dan? So you've seen this a number of times, it's the site plan. And we've already talked a lot about the nodal overlay and how your long-range planning decisions already decided that the nodal overlay was important in the master plan in this area. So as you're looking at the site plan, you know, where you see that is the range of housing types and home lot sizes. You know, like Dan said, we could have done multifamily apartments, but wanted to keep it as exclusively single-family. There was a question about, is it market rate or affordable? It's all market rate, but that's the benefit of smaller attached homes are more affordable than larger detached homes. And so there is certainly a range of income levels that could be accommodated here. The frontage improvements, the grid of streets, the alley loading, those are all things that your nodal overlay zone have told us that that's what vision you have for your community. We'll have other slides in a few moments about the open spaces, multimodal connections. You know, notwithstanding the fact that this is on the edge of your current city, it's not just a blank canvas for development. There are limitations, even on farmland, in terms of what your development can look like. Those limitations are your frontage improvements and where your access can be, so it can align with other access points or meet access spacing. So that starts to become some fixed points. You've got connections, you know, our east-west connection starts up a little, you know, in one place, but then needs to connect to Par Road in a different place. So you have to make that gradual grade. You know, those are fixed points that we have to start dealing with. Water likes to flow downhill. That, you know, that tells us where the storm is going to be. There's some wetlands that are being preserved, the church is being preserved. So you start to have some fixed points that you just can't move, and then adding into that, the type of homes that we know that the market is asking for, how do you start fitting those in? And so, you know, a question that you had, Commissioner Berlin, is this just about bigger houses for these variances? Well, partially for some of them, but it's also, in order to make these street connections, your lot might be a little shorter than we'd otherwise like. And so we need a little bit of breathing room on a front yard setback, for example. So it's not just house size, it's other things. And, you know, that minimum density, if you're trying to keep them all single-family homes, it's hard to meet. You know, maybe we could have avoided some variances if we'd had apartments instead, but that's not what this project is proposing for this community. So the next slide, please. So this is a series of slides, and I'll go through it quickly. We just think that this one in particular highlights some of the green areas, everything from the small neighborhood park to the stormwater areas, the connections, the wetlands that are being preserved, the buffer around the church. You could go ahead, Dan. A little bit more, we've put some landscaping around the church to provide a buffer for that, and they've kept a pretty generous area there also. That's going to be some of their drainage field, but also that gives them a little bit of breathing room throughout the project. And this, Dan showed you, it's the park. Chair Piper, I think you had a question about the fence. That's just a little detail of the wood fence that we're talking about. Next slide. Have you seen this conceptual idea of what some of that play equipment may look like? Next. Oh, okay. And, you know, before I get to this, one thing I'd like to note that was not on there, but I think is such a community amenity, is the off-site connections that we're making to the school that will then eventually, sorry, the park to the school, and then the improvements to the park. These next couple of slides, and Roseanne, you know, please do weigh in if I miss something. These are renderings of other homes in other communities that Lennar has built, not necessarily exactly what's going to be built here, but just wanted to give you a little bit of a sense of the types of homes that you might see here. So.
Okay, yeah, Roseanne Johnson with Lennar Northwest, 11807 Northeast 99th Street, Suite 1170, and that's in Vancouver, Washington, 98682. So just to speak a little bit more about the duplex-style paired townhomes, and those are your front, those are your yellow lots on your site plan that you've seen, as well as the purple lots. And those home sites are, from our perspective, ready to accommodate approximately this type of housing that you're seeing on the screen. So. So these widths of homes, driveways, approaches to the home. Some are one-car garage, some are two, can accommodate two vehicles on the, on the parking pad. And then the alley load in the bottom right. So I think there was a question about amount of on-street parking in between. And as you can see on the left, Commissioner Berlin, the two-car duplex-style paired townhomes, which are fee simple, bought and sold individually for different homeowners, can accommodate not only two cars on the pad, but then because they're paired, they also preserve that on-street parking on either side. I think that's what you were trying to get at, right? Okay. So yeah, so I think we can go on from there unless there's any other questions. We have bigger visuals of these, Dan. You can run through one at a time. So there's just a larger version. We, we call this the Azelia. The Brookings and Burton is kind of a, I see it as a modern, mid-century modern, maybe. That's the farmhouse-style Brookings and Burton that is in an actual, in an actual community. And then the McKay. That's really all we have.
Yeah, you know, and I just wanted to respond to one question about the annexation. I think it was Commissioner Ellsworth. You know, a couple of things to keep in mind. State law does provide cities the authority to annex what's called islands of territory. And it doesn't require consent. So that's always a tool if, from a services perspective, or if there's a health need that they need to connect to sewer or something like that. You know, oftentimes, you see cities like to annex in order to increase the tax revenue, but, you know, as a church, they're probably not contributing to your tax base. So, you know, absent maybe some confusion about where fire services should go, if they're not going to develop, I, I think it's, it's okay. It'll just have a little quilt in your city boundaries, but otherwise, it shouldn't be a problem for you. So that's really all we have prepared. You know, we thought you might be interested in the variances. Dan's done such a good job in writing in his materials. I don't know that there's anything that we need to repeat, but are certainly happy to answer any other questions.
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
So, why don't you just hold there a second?
Oh, sure.
I'll probably skip down through some other things. So we've had the testimony by the applicant. Is there testimony by other proponents, other people that are in favor of this that wish to testify? Okay, seeing none. Is there any testimony by opponents, those who are in opposition to the project? Seeing, okay, therefore, there's no rebuttal, so no reason for you to be there. Thank you.
With recommended commission, sorry, modified conditions. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing, and we will deliberate. What do you think, folks?
I just have one thing to say about setbacks. I did a lot of campaigning last October, door-to-door. All of Smith Creek. And the very small front yards are, I think, a problem.
I mean, I understand that, you know, people, everybody's working today, so there's not that much time to maintain big yard and all of that. But most of the houses will have children, and they don't necessarily want to go to the park. I don't know. I just think there needs to be more green space around each house.
Alan getting older, and a little yard sure sounds a lot better to me.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Having two kids, I would say I'd rather a larger backyard versus the front.
I just meant a green space anywhere, front or back.
Okay, I'll take my shot. The first thing I would say is that this is a medium-density zone. And I think the variance requests are very consistent with that increased-density philosophy. It may not be something that we as individuals might want. I live on an acre of ground, so what does that tell you about what I want? But that's not our decision. The other thing is the, the traffic issue. This comes up weekly, monthly, when we continue to do this. And I think the biggest problem with communities such as Woodburn is one of the things that we fight is, and there is no solution for this, and that's the tax structure in the state of Oregon. That automatically puts communities and counties and the state behind the eight ball and collecting the money to do the kind of work that needs to be done. In an ideal world, all the infrastructure would be in. All the intersections would be mitigated ahead of time. The money would have been forecasted out in front of it. That's not the way our taxing system works. It's unfortunate, but it is the way it is. And as I've said before, if we create enough of a problem, it will be dealt with. It will perk up in the priority list, and it will get dealt with. It's backwards. I don't argue that. But it's the way it is. Let's see. As far as the work that Amazon did with the rounder and stuff, there's a couple of things that are unique there. Number one, the very size of Amazon situation allowed them resources that most of us can't even imagine. But the other thing that did, part of the traffic mitigation that they did was on their property, property that they owned. And they paid all of those expenses to do that, because they almost had to to get the trucks in and out. But in this case, Brighton Point, the intersections that have been highlighted as being problems to them are over a mile away. Not that it's not a problem, that's not my point, but they do not own that property. They have no control over that property. And frankly, they are only a portion of the problem, potentially, not the entire hundred percent. It's a, it's a different formula. I, I think the project is well done. I genuinely compliment Dan on your presentation. I think it was done very well. And Brighton Point, you folks, the job that you've done with Dan to work these things out and, and whatnot, I think is excellent. As I say, I think probably one of the biggest things is, this is a nodal district that's for, for a higher density than, than what we normally see.
Well, I'd like to revisit the variances. Looking at the variance approval guidelines, I don't see any circumstances that create a hardship that we should set aside WDO standards for.
I agree.
Yes, say that again.
Well, the WDO standards, they were adopted last June. It's not a year yet. And it's, the guidelines are, we will, we set those aside if there's a hardship or some default or some problem with the property. There isn't such a problem. We want to change the guidelines that we have, set, set the rear, you know, the rear setback back.
Especially because they're recently redone. So.
My response to a good portion of that is that the a lot of the setbacks, for example, the backyard setbacks on a good portion of those properties backs up to open space.
It's a street.
No, well, a good share of it backs up to those the greenways that run through the middle of it.
These are all on a street.
Here. As, as Dan explained, perhaps you could, Dan, go back over those.
RSN. Okay, the fifty percent.
How the various variances affect which pieces of property. Sorry, I need to share my screen. Just visualizing here, this would be the median, nodal medium-density residential zone outlined in red. And the remaining would be the
You speak a little louder, Dan.
The outline here in red is the nodal medium-density residential zone. The remaining chunk of property here is the single-family resident, nodal single-family residential. Just to give you a visual of the, the zone boundaries. And, and, but the variances affect different portions of, of the development.
So.
They kind of don't affect, each variance does not affect every piece of property.
If I can, maybe I can walk through, and Dan will probably correct me when I, when I misspeak. So remember, there's essentially three different variances related to the lots and the setbacks, right? The other one has to do with alleys. So when you're talking about, say, the one specifically having to do with the rear setback requirements, it only affects the RMN, which is the areas that are shown on that bright red area. And I'll be honest to you that when staff looked at this, one of the things that seemed peculiar to us about it is the fact that this entire property has this split zoning on it, right? It seems arbitrarily run through the center of the property. Oddly enough, they don't need a rear setback requirement from the RSN portion of this, only from the RMN portion. Did I get that right, Dan? The reason that strikes me as odd and a bit unusual, which kind of leads to staff, one of the reasons for staff support for the variance, is again, the RMN zoning, it's, you could just think of it as medium residential. It's the higher-density zoning. That allows apartments, right? The other is more designed for single-family homes. Single-family homes tend to have, you know, a rear setback of, I think it's a standard twenty-four feet, Dan? Is that single-family for a rear setback? But for the RMN, it's even expanded even further. That just seems a bit odd. I think it's because the RMN zone anticipated apartments being constructed in, as opposed to this as opposed to the single-family homes that are put in there. So it really feels on the ground, what's being constructed is much closer to single-family housing, because that's what it is, even though it's being constructed in that zone. And the setbacks are much higher in that RMN zone, which of course really has to do, and I think the code's thinking more about medium-density, higher-density apartment buildings that you can build, fourplexes, et cetera. And again, that's, it's perfectly reasonable, and I always want everyone to be reminded that variances are discretionary decisions. Ultimately, it'd be a decision for the council to make, as well as the annexation question, right? About the appropriateness of annexing the property at all. I just wanted to give you a feel for kind of one of the quirks in the code, which is a bit unusual. And our code's still a bit untested in these areas. It's pretty recent when we adopted these. That and the, and of course, by virtue of the fact that the majority of these don't adversely impact the name. That's what we always think about staff. Our first rule of variance is always, who will it harm if it's adopted? In this case, not all of them, not all these are completely against open spaces and not impacting anybody, but most of them are. I just wanted to give you kind of a feel for staff's feedback and where we came up with this thing.
But it affects, in the RMN zone, it affects the lots that are colored in teal, correct? Correct, teal and purple. Okay, but, and what I'm saying is almost each and every one of those lots backs up to open space, either a street.
Well, the purple, that is between two streets, all of them.
It, it, yes, the purple goes both ways, but, but it backs up to what will eventually be Evergreen, so you got open space there. The teal backs up to the greenway that's in there.
You can't, no, the green space. It's a green space.
It's open space. This, but this is all.
The applicant showed a picture, and I really appreciated the applicant's stripped-down version with just the green spaces. That center white is green space.
I see that, but we're looking at the purple ones that are up.
And, and I, and I guess the next thing that answers, deny the project, put in apartments.
So all the purple ones.
But you deny the project, you put in apartments. Is that? Is, yeah.
If I'm putting in apartment, if I'm, it's.
Which is kind of what it's going for, too. Well, they'd be rentals. They would be apartments. Can I add another little tidbit of nuance? The old code that changed last June for the RMN zone actually had a twenty-foot rear setback standard. It was changed in June to be, changed to be this twenty-four, thirty, thirty-six. So if they had come in a year ago, they wouldn't need this rear setback variance request. It's just a fun little. When did, when did?
Frustrating.
Is June twenty-second, I think, twenty-twenty-two, something like that? End of June.
When, when did you come in?
Oh, I thought you meant the code.
Okay. Sit down, please. Oh, you may need to hit the mic, sorry.
Thank you. Reopening the hearing so Dana Craftcheck can respond. We submitted in April, so actually, we're vested under the old code. But the city, learning how this nodal overlay zone applies, found some things that they wanted to change. And we felt like overall, the new nodal overlay zone provided a better community. So we voluntarily subjected ourselves to a code that wasn't applicable. That new code includes the need for these variances. So if we didn't rise to your new standards in terms of the challenge to design towards that, we wouldn't be asking for that variance at all. So I think that is a little bit of context, you know, and if you're concerned about the hardship, I think that that goes into it. And, you know, another one of these hardships is really the minimum-density standard. You know, if we're going to stay with a single-family home, we're pegged around whole sometimes. You know, that's the hardship that that's presented. I think the point about we're backing up to open space, fair point that that is a street, it's not an open space. I mean, there's going to be a sidewalk and street trees. The point is, there's not going to be another house right behind it, so that there is some, some breathing room, some, some light and air that comes in.
I think it'll be Par Road. It won't be.
But no, it certainly, it's a road, period. And with a big fence, yeah, and a fence. I live on a busy street. I understand that. But, but you're not going to have someone's rear window, you know, just a few feet.
Just on the sides of the house.
Yeah, but we're not asking for any variances on the sides.
And we didn't see anything about the alleys where they won't be. Does this picture?
The alley variance is more of a percentage. You want seventy-five percent of the homes served by an alley. And we're not able to achieve that with the different connections that need to be made. You know, the alley does create a really nice front door, street environment. It also includes a whole bunch of imperious surface. It's, it's a lot of pavement in a community. And so the way we've laid it out, we have included alleys in some places. But for example, on the purple lots that butt up against Par Road, we're not going to put an alley next to Par Road so that those could be rear-loaded. So, so those are some of the limitations.
Okay, so this shows the forty-four point four percent alley.
Right, so it's just the purple ones that are not alley-loaded. And you'll see there if they're on the sides.
Yes, yes. I know it's highly irregular, but we're doing it in.
Thank you very much. I'm Michael Anders with Lennar, 11807 Northeast 99th. Thank you very much. I'm Michael Anders with Lennar 11807 Northeast 99 Streets, Suite 1170, Vancouver 98682. Just wanted to add a, a, so to a few of the concerns on their, the yards. As Dana mentioned, when you put a land plan together, it's a puzzle, trying to figure out how to squish all the density of the streets, all the connectivity, the open space, et cetera. The, one of the reasons that we are seeking the variance for the, the paired townhomes from all alley to front load is it gives us not only variety of home product to serve the public, but we're also mindful that it gives us rear yards. With your, your alley loaded homes, you don't have as many of the homes that are going to have a, a, as much yard. So the, the homes in the purple will give our homeowners, our future homeowners, they will get yards. And that's one of the purpose for, for providing that. And in addition, one of the things that, that maybe we didn't deliver as, as much as we could have, is the park area is not required. It's one of the trade-offs that we're providing, that we feel that the homeowners, especially with higher density, want some additional area to, to go play. And we didn't have to provide that. That's one of the things that we're offering to do in order to get some of the variances that we're requesting. And then the third item is, is with smaller home sites, a lot of the times are smaller, they get narrower. So in order to get a sufficient home product that is livable and has sufficient garage space for parking, the home product tend to get deeper. And so we have to monitor that with sufficient parking, yard space, and get it all to fit within setbacks in order to provide not only some sort of yard space, but livable homes, and then something that looks aesthetically pleasing as well. So the variances were very, very thought out as far as what we envisioned. And we're, we're also getting a lot of feedback from homeowners that are coming into Smith Creek and what they're looking for, both from the livability as well as a, a price point, square footage. So all those things were taken into consideration when we were, were coming up with this land plan. And again, we've already mentioned before, thank you to staff, because it was a lot of work really helping us with that puzzle. Normally we go into a land design, we might do two, three iterations of a land plan to bring in with the two different zones and the codes and the nodal overlay. It was many iterations to come up with a land plan to make that puzzle work. So there was, again, just a lot of thought that went into that in order to come up with what we're proposing. Thank you for letting me explain that.
Thank you.
I know you were talking about the whole and wondering why the variance creates a hardship. And one of the things that all the cities are going to have to start really looking at is density. And our new governor wants to add 350,000 homes. And this is one way that they are kind of forcing cities to have smaller law.
Using the, the percentage, that's not going to shrink the backyard or the front yard. That's not going to add any houses. And those other, those other places for planned unit developments that we gave those variances for, so you know, it's a difference.
As, you know, over the last few years, just from my own perspective and the work I do, I've seen a lot of attention being given to people that are under housed, not just the homeless, but people who are. One of the problems we've had in Woodburn is people treating for how, be, there are families in a house. And this is one of those ways that people can get into housing. These are not affordable housing.
These are not affordable houses.
Well, there is affordable housing and then there's low income housing. They're two different standards. And with the jobs that are coming to Woodburn, we, we are going to need places for people to live. And affordable housing means, you know, what, not only what the market can bear, but what the average employee in the market can, can afford. Huge difference between affordable housing and low income housing.
Mike, if you slightly more affordable, if we don't shrink the yards, that's going to make the house bigger.
Or cost to build and.
I personally, I'm for, I'm for having a house be a little bit softer and a little more green and a little more friendly, a little less concrete.
And I think if you've looked at Smith Creek, nobody parks in the garage. They're all in the driveway. It looks like a used car lot because the house isn't big enough to put their stuff in. So a little bit bigger house, little bit smaller setbacks, gives you a little bit more room for all your stuff.
Necessarily.
Okay.
So before we hear. We have a sense of.
Yeah, split down the middle.
Yeah, I think you get the variance requests are reasonable. It's not necessarily the neighborhood. I'm actually this neighborhood I want to live in. I'm tired of gigantic yard. All of us have large.
Yeah. And so it's, it's hard, it's hard to intermix our personal wants and desires with what.
Is best for the community.
What's best for the community and what.
Can you ask the other two? So you guys are both, or adopt with your, okay, the variances? Can you ask me the truth? They're okay with variances? And then that's kind of taken, oh, is that kosher? I'm okay with the variances.
Chris, I don't know, which way are you leaning on this?
I, I definitely am in favor of the variances right now.
So, so I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move the planning commission recommend the city council approved ANX 22-03, S U B 22-04, and Z M C 22-03 Brighton Point subdivision at 8708 Par Road Northeast, and V A R 22-07, subject to the conditions of the staff report of June 12th, 2023, and adding two staff reports dated February 7th, 2023, and February 9th, 2023.
I'm going to ask Mackenzie, did we get it done there?
I think I have it on the screen.
Yeah, so the motion is, yeah, if you want to look at Dan's motion, I want to make sure that we get the amended conditions from the staff memo of February 9th.
That's good. So moved.
Thank you. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to recommend the city council approve the Brighton Point subdivision application, ANX 22-03. I'm not sure what.
Facing plan is the PP.
Anyway, blah, blah, blah. With conditioned outline, the staff report is accepted and modified by the staff memo dated February 9th, 2023.
And February 7th, 2023. There's two of them.
And February 7th, 2023. Everybody clear on what we're voting on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like a roll call vote on this one.
Chair Piper, we need a second.
We did have one.
I got one from Commissioner Bartel. Commissioner Berlin.
Aye.
Commissioner Corning.
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel.
Yes.
Commissioner Lassen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez-Mahia.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ellsworth.
Yes.
Chair Pike.
Yes. The Brighton Point subdivision is a, is recommended to the city council on a unanimous vote.
Can I add just one point, just as a follow-up to it? We'll pass that on. Again, that's just a recommendation coming from the planning commission. We'll have another public hearing in front of the city council, six weeks-ish, somewhere out there at that point, for the council to make a decision. But, but I want the commissioners to know that in my memorandum that I provide, or I'm sorry, that Dan will provide to the city council with his staff report, we'll provide just a general summary of the, of the comments here and the discussion that the planning commission had, specifically in this case about the, the variances. I think we have a good idea what they are. That's why it's important that you all discuss those, so we can capture those. Because the whole point here is to give a, a, the best recommendation you can to the city council about the concerns.
That'd be great.
Thank you, folks. Alrighty.
Number two.
Number two. That's fine. You don't want to sit around for another one? I'm shocked. I thought we're the best entertainment in town tonight. Yeah.
Yeah, she keeps it up here around, she said one time.
Alrighty. Next up is an annexation request for 2115 Mulholland Road. Again, a type four application for a recommendation to city council, annexation 22-04, zoning map change 22-04 for the, I've already told you where the property's at. Kick off this little round. Are there any potential conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits by the commission that they need to declare? Are there any challenges to the commission? Seeing none, public hearing statement, please.
Both Oregon law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary plaid judicial land use hearings and require that at the commencement of the hearing, this statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report and are also as follows. Woodburn Development Ordinance Sections 4.01, 0.07, 5.04, 0.01, and 5.04, 0.04. The hearing will proceed in the following general order: staff report, applicant's presentation, testimony in favor of the application, testimony in opposition to the application, rebuttal, closure of the record, deliberation, and decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any party wanting a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request while the record is open.
Thank you. Dan, since you're the only planner in the room tonight.
I'm on again. Much shorter PowerPoint for you here.
What can we do about that?
So this is an annexation for 2115 Mulholland Road. This one's just the annexation and the zoning map change. Again, that's type four land use application package. So commission's just making a recommendation to the council. There'll be a second hearing for the city council and they would issue a decision. I'll go ahead and enter the staff report and its attachments into the record. You may be familiar with the location here. We're in the, now in the other corner, the diagonal corner now, northeast. So Safeway here, we've got 9090 running kind of north-south, Mount Hood Avenue, Mulholland Road. The Woodburn Place Apartments project kind of surround this property on the north side, northeast and west sides. And then the Mulholland Road on the south there. Again, it's just the annexation, so I, I don't really have a whole lot for you tonight. This is a, a close-up of the property. It's just under one acre. Three properties total. It's identified in our comprehensive plan map as commercial. I believe the fire district is slated to do a practice burn of the house. I'll look at the applicant later to confirm that, but no development proposed at this time. Again, it would come in as commercial general zoning district if the annexation was approved. I'm aware that the commission had, had some significant traffic concerns for this, this area of the city, specifically when you were all looking at the Woodburn Place Apartments projects. So I just wanted to recap a couple of the mitigation requirements that were put on those two projects specific to this intersection. The projects identified a project, about $1.2 million cost associated for that project to address some of these safety and capacity concerns for this intersection. And they each had proportionate share contributions that they'll be required to pay. So the, the first one on the east side came in 2019, and they had a proportionate share contribution of about $120,000. We've already received that payment from the developer. In fact, they've already started, there's tenants already living out there. They really cranked on their construction. And then the, the western phase, slightly higher, because there were, I want to say something like 50 additional apartments on that western phase. So they're going to be paying about $155,000 as a proportionate share contribution towards a project at this intersection to alleviate traffic concerns. So I, to refresh the commission on, on what was identified as a mitigation project to alleviate those traffic concerns. There's no development proposed here. Any future development that the property owner would come back to the city to propose would have a traffic study component to it. We would have our staff, certainly ODOT staff, because those are state facilities. Mulholland Road's a state highway. It's close to 9090. That's a state highway. ODOT staff would be very much a part of that review. And whatever development they propose would have a similar proportionate share contribution tied to it for that mitigation project. As we talked about in this previous hearing, the development would also include system development charge fees that would go into the city's pot to help pay for improvements. So that would all come in the future when the owner sought to develop. Now they're just looking to annex while they figure out what they want to do. The applicant is here. They can speak. They can answer questions. I do have a PowerPoint from them.
Are there any questions for Dan at this time?
But that's all I have.
Okay. Testimony by the applicant. And then name an address, please.
I think you'll have.
Can you hear me? Okay. I'm Daisy Goble. I'm with AKS Engineering Forestry. And our address is 3700 River Road North, Suite 1, in Natsing Kaiser, Oregon, 97303. So yeah, a very straightforward compared to the last project. We, Dan did a great job of covering our bullet points. We put together a quick slideshow, but we'll keep it brief. And we're happy to answer any questions that the commission has at this time. If you want to go to the next slide, you know, you're just gonna, this is our project team. Zach Pels and also Jennifer Danziger with Lancaster Millbley has done the preliminary work for this annexation, but as we discussed, we're, we can just go through a little bit of the project background, but basically just reiterating what Dan said. The site located on the east end of town. And it is an island annexation, which as Chris and Dan had discussed with the last project, it's a high priority annexation according to the comprehensive plan. project, it's a high priority annexation according to the comprehensive plan. And it's right there in between the two phases of Woodburn Place. So yes, it's an island annexation, high priority. It's within the commercial comprehensive plan designation, so we're not requesting amendment to that. We're just seeking an application of the, what would be the automatic general commercial designation for the zoning. The future use of the site is undetermined, so there's no current impacts to the facilities or any city services. Yep, so then, and then there's those two multifamily developments that were approved, the east and west, and the frontage improvements for those sites are already in progress. As you can see, we are, since we're right in between those sites, the way that the Woodburn code is, kind of has some nuance that allows for that frontage improvement to be built all at once, rather than saving our little section for when we do development. So that whole strip of sidewalks and street trees and extra lanes is all going to be built out in coordination with that development. So here's just a screen grab that we utilized from their approval. So that sidewalk landscape strip, bike lane, and two travel lanes is currently in progress. And if you go to the next slide, I also have photos of where they're at with that, but that'll stretch along our entire frontage. Yeah, so in summary, we are seeking your recommendation for approval, because our annexation proposal is consistent with the relevant approval criteria. Staff agrees with the recommendation. Like we said, it's really straightforward, and any impacts to existing facilities will be reviewed and mitigated at the time of site development, which I really appreciate Chris having gone into, and Dan, detail on sort of the nuance of the TSP and the CIP, and how those funds are allocated and distributed at the time of development. And so that, of course, will all be applicable to the site at that point. So that's all I really have. Like I said, it's short and sweet, but we're happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Questions? Hearing none. Thank you. Testimony by proponents, those who might be here that are also in favor of this project. Seeing none. Testimony by opponents, those who are in opposition to this. Seeing none. No need for rebuttal. I will declare the public hearing closed, hopefully. Discussion.
So I'm happy with bringing in an island, because that was my concern with the last one.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, it kind of makes you wonder sometimes, so I just did happen first. But anyway, Chair, entertaining motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend the city council approve ANX 22-04 and ZMC 22-04, 2115 Molalla Road annexation.
Just second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the annexation of 2115 Molalla Road and a zone change. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Sorry you had to sit through the other one to go through that. As I say, I'm sure it was very entertaining. Is there any business from the commission?
We have a quick question related to the order of things. Why do we put things in the order we do? Is there any prior reason?
There actually is. We bring them in in the order that they get submitted to us. You fall down the queue.
Is it, is it the chair's prerogative to change the agenda?
The commission before any meeting can decide that they want to adjust the agenda before the meetings start.
We didn't want to second the meeting, started something called this house.
Yeah, we need, the chair needs to do that more. I will repeat that I will not be here at the next meeting. Some people thought it was going to be this meeting, but it was next meeting. Just getting that on the record.
Can I get a quick staff update, or was there more?
No.
More commission comments? Just looking ahead, and this will not surprise you, we have lots of items coming up on our agenda for the next couple of months. However, I'm going to walk through a couple of things and try to give you a heads up on them. Our next meeting is the 23rd. We have a multifamily development, it's on Hardcastle? On Hardcastle. Because that's the only one, what I thought would be good, I think it'd be helpful, instructive, productive, choose the noun you like, to have maybe sort of a Q and A kind of session with staff to talk about a lot of the things, such as, and this gets, some of these come from Counsel Corning, but I hear these, and I think they're always a good idea. We haven't had them in a while. Think of it more like a work session. We can talk a little bit about how you make decisions, how conditions are written, where you have discretion, where you don't have discretion, and I'll try to answer all the questions I can. Mackenzie will attend that meeting as well. I think it's helpful. Honestly, I, our job's to try to give you the best info in the way that works for you, right? We want to get you the correct information to make the best decisions. If there's a better way to present it to you, we're happy to listen and do it. That's what, that's what we're trying to do. We, and so having these check-in meetings, I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah.
And I'll do that. Maybe I'll put that on the agenda, just a separate work session after the quasi judicial item. I'm not going to make someone wait. Is that okay?
Be here.
You can call in your questions to give them to share. Moving forward, I also, I have, and I will email to those who aren't here, and I put on the, on the table in front of each, or out front on the days in front of you, a training opportunity that DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development's putting together. It's March 22nd, which is a Wednesday. It runs from 5:00 to 7:30. It's down in Corvallis. Hold it, but you can call in and listen to it remotely. It's a fate day. It's a little, it's a, it's not very much mighty. The staff's happy to pay for it. I'll email it out to everyone again. I have a hard copy here. But that's what it is. It's being put together by, so there's a couple of attorneys involved with it, and they're going to talk about, real quick, I'm reading the bulleted agenda, basics of local and state responsibilities for planning commissioners and staff, decision-making bodies, ethical behavior. They'll talk about what ex parte means, quasi judicial, sort of a super shortened version of the kind of training I think most of you, I gave you when you first came on, and I'm happy to do them again, if anyone's interested, if you think it'll be helpful. You can go there yourself, or we're happy to go down. Some staff may be there for something else anyway. And if not, let us know, and we'll zoom you in and get you that information on that side. The next piece I just wanted to bring up is, we have had trees on the back burner. We've been looking at tree code modifications. I honestly think, tell me if you all think out of line, I think that we could hold a public hearing on it. And if, I think what's nice about holding a public hearing is, it lets us do a notice out to the public, it lets us present, put online sort of a draft, this is what we're thinking of doing, and to get feedback. And you can ask them when, my hope is we could do that maybe on March 9th is the date I'm targeting for it. If it works out well, if you guys have a discussion, you come up with language that you like, you're welcome to make a recommendation and move it to council. If you still want to discuss it more, we can do it more. What's required under the law is that we hold one public hearing minimum at the Planning Commission, that you make a formal recommendation to council.
Do you have to have a draft before we hold a meeting?
You do. I have to have one that I present to the public, and essentially.
We never want to get some work in print. You know, how do you ever get?
Well, and if, when you said March 9th, a bell went off in my head. I won't be here.
I don't think I can be there either.
So maybe we can.
March 9th is a bad night.
It's not a problem. What I can do is, I'll still have something for you on March 9th, language, code language written up, and we'll do it as a work session in there, all right? It's one more chance to, you'll get it ahead of time if you comment or whatever, and then we'll have the public hearing.
Frankly, I like the public hearing. We need to get more fingerprints on the knife.
Yeah, it's fine. Okay, that's, I, that was it. I think the only other piece is, I was going to mention staff's working on something that's kind of behind the scenes you don't see, which is, we're working on a increase to our planning application fees that we collect. So as an example, that annexation.
We have input on that?
You don't have it, but I'm just letting you know about it. That we're doing that, the council approves it. They formally. So I don't know, Dan, approximately, what approximately would be the fee for the loaded annexation that had all those various elements? 15K or so for the subdivision variances annexation, phased plan?
What they are.
Yeah.
Probably around 15,000 to 20,000.
So they probably paid 15,000 or 20,000 for that. That's for the planning process for us to work it from their application to the city council meeting, and then they work through the rest.
They got their money's worth.
They have.
I mean, we did everything we could.
And by the way, those fees will be going up. Overall, I can tell you, they need a lot of massaging. They haven't been touched in, I think, 18, 20 years, somewhere in that area?
Wow.
Since before the recession.
Well, the only thing I would say about that is that when it comes to affordable housing, that all, that all goes in the budget.
You got it. It does.
It opens it up, so.
If that were a small affordable project, that'd be 15K upfront they have to come up with, because I can tell you what we don't do here, and that's waive fees. So I'm letting you know that very clearly. We don't waive fees around here.
And that raises the price per door up.
Yes, it does.
Just saying.
So what does it cost if somebody just wants a variance? What does that cost?
I think it's $4,600, Dan, or $2,400.
Variance right now is $2,400.
$2,400.
They want one, and then we say no. Then what?
They lost $2,400.
Wow. So it's up to you guys to get it all right.
We discourage those when we can to not waste their time and money. You've probably heard me saying, I'm not joking, we, we probably reject, I don't know, 90% of the variance verbal requests that we get. Well, I'd just like to get a variance for that. I'll just get, and then we say, yeah, you're going to waste your time, and it's going to cost you time and money, and ultimately, you may get turned down. But as you all know, it's always their decision, right? I always tell them, I'm not telling you not to. Maybe you'll get approved, but I don't want people to lose their money. If they're wasting their time, part of our job is to give people some good direction on how this works. These, don't kid yourself, this process, all of this is really complicated. It really is. I know it is, and we try to give as much guidance as we can.
It's way more complicated for us than it is for you.
It's tough, and I feel nothing more than the mom and pop who comes in, who wants to open the store, or something simple, and you know, and I shoot down their dreams. I say, yeah, it's actually going to cost you 500,000, not 5,000, you know, and it's, but it happens all the time. The worst thing we can do is say, yeah, go ahead and just keep budging ahead with that, and then they're out all that money, and they don't get it. We don't want that to happen.
Does Cindy Wordinger Kelly come to mind?
That's, that's.
Do you know that? Who I'm talking about? If you remember, it's out where the old Family Sandwich Express used to be?
Right next to KFC?
Yeah, right next to the KFC. There's that little lot in there, and Cindy Wordinger Kelly came by and got some land use, the flower shop.
Was it Nick?
Well, what I'm referring to is, I talked to Cindy, this is probably six months ago, and bought my wife flowers or something, or anyway. And she was lamenting that she can't stop now because she hasn't turned a spade of ground, and she's in it over $100,000. So what's some of that?
And it's, that's just a good example. It's hard, and things turn up. I want to say that one has soil issues or something. They kind of came out of the glue.
$100,000 buying the property.
Well, that's fees. Well, no, it might include the, probably includes the property.
I think that it does, and there's the building permit approved for it. It's waiting on the shelf to just literally come back up and build. It takes a long time, and then all these things cost money. They are. It's, it's hard.
And that's before, before she puts a building on it.
Yeah, that building.
Yeah, this has a building. The building. That's just, she has the plans approved.
That place would go bananas. I mean, just visually, it's right there. You get off the freeway, you stop in, you got a general.
It's the giving in.
Wow, that's too bad.
I just had one other fun comment for trees. As you're considering a hearing date for trees, Arbor Day is April 28th, and there's a, April 27th is a scheduled hearing, so.
Oh, I like that.
Just to throw that.
What if we want to cut down a lot of trees, Dan? Is that, is that not good?
I'm hopeful delaying until April.
All righty. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Sorry, Chris, you're late. Getting that done. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 All right. We're adjourned. Thank you, commissioners.
Those commissioners can just shut off their cameras.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate that. There's a lot on there, especially when you're watching from home or listening as you are. Commissioner, hey.
I wouldn't mind having a class on what we're supposed to do about traffic stuff. I just don't get why it's so hard to.
I think, I think Commissioner Cabralis is, or. I don't think anyone heard you.
I did.
Okay, we've got a, we've got a commissioner trying to make a comment, and I can't hear her.
I wouldn't mind having a discussion about why we can't seem to get any answers to the traffic questions I keep bringing up. I just don't understand why I ask what I feel are reasonable questions, but I just, it just keeps getting put off.
Hi, this, this is Chris Kerr. I'm sorry. I heard your comment. You know, I think this is, I think at the, what did I say, the 23rd? Why don't I, on the 23rd, I mean, I'm happy to discuss like in a lot more detail, kind of transportation, how it works, how it gets paid for. Your concerns aren't lost on, on any of us. We're trying to find various ways to pay for improvements, and I'll be frank, make applicants pay for every single penny I can make them pay for, but I can't charge them a penny more. And I think, I'm happy to have that kind of discussion. I think I can give you more input and the rest of the commissioners, and answer as many questions as I can. And I'm looking, maybe Curtis can come in. Curtis can help as well. It, it is complicated.
It's a city problem. It's not an applicant problem. The city's well aware of the problem areas, and yet they keep kicking the can down the road. And for those of us who live in these areas, and not, I get that not everybody on the commission does, so they're more concerned about traffic in their own areas. I, I feel like we just keep having the same issues over and over again, and we're going to become Seattle. Do we want to do that?
Yeah, let me try to, again, I have some ideas on, I guess, answering all the questions I can.
Yeah, and I think the 23rd will be a good night.
Yeah, at the next, at the next meeting, because we only have one item on there. I'll make it a separate work session, and that's one of the, I'll definitely talk about that in every way I can. And honestly, I'll answer every question I can, and Curtis will help as well. I appreciate those, Deb. Thanks.
Yeah. I know you've got neighborhood traffic that you worry about, and I really worry about 99 traffic at the corner of 214 and 99, and the corner of Cleveland and 99. I drove over a bunch of debris today on my way to work, and there must have been an ugly wreck over the weekend.
Oh, not construction.
Sign and a doormat and a good, I mean, literally.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.